...the number of presentations and/or length of comments. At the discretion of the President, patrons may be recognized at other times during the board meeting. The board is very interested in audience comments. According to board policy, members cannot respond during the actual meeting. The board will listen to and research all audience comments. If necessary, additional follow-up will occur through district administrators.
Thank you. We do have audience comment cards that were filled out. Brendan, Kern, we're going to jump you up and start us off.
Good evening, members of the board and central office staff. My name is Brendan Kerns. I'm the president of the St. Charles Education Association, the exclusive bargaining organization for certified employees and nurses in our district. I'd like to begin by offering congratulations to SCEA member and SCSD Teacher of the Year, Jeffrey Collier. Mr. Collier has advanced in the state's Teacher of the Year contest, and we're pulling for him to bring that honor back here to St. Charles. Even though it's summer, SCEA members are still staying busy. We have members teaching summer school, leading professional development, and reworking their curriculum. Thank you for all your hard work and dedication to our students. It will pay off when we return in August. New teacher orientation is coming up the second week of August, and SCA is excited to get the opportunity to meet our new employees and tell them about all the wonderful things our district and our organization are doing every day. Finally, I'd like to highlight some research recently undertaken in two areas: teacher recruitment and retention, and the effects of cell phones on our current students. These studies were done by Missouri NEA, surveying our membership throughout the state. To save paper, I have emailed each of you those if you want to check on them for future reference. The teacher retention study was part of Missouri NEA's presentation to the state's Blue Ribbon Commission on Education. Education professionals were originally excluded from this commission, but Missouri NEA fought for their inclusion and took the opportunity to present on the current state of teaching. During the Spring NEA Leadership Summit, NEA Director Andy Swatter, as well as members from North Kansas City and Special School District, surveyed members on their thoughts on cell phones in the classroom. In addition to getting teachers' opinions, they conducted research on the problem of cell phones and what can be done. I believe both these reports will give great insight to teachers across the state and here in St. Charles as to where we are right now. If you will come over and have any questions, I'm always happy to have a conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Brendan. Our next one is Rachel Homelack.
My name is Rachel Homelack, and if you do not know who I am by now, or maybe you should, I went to take my four-year-old son to the Katherine Lindeman Library at the end of May to get him a library card. To my shock, I found a man with a goatee, dressed in drag, running the children's section. Ever since that day, I've been fighting to remove this type of sexuality being pushed on our children. This librarian not only dresses in drag, but dresses very provocatively, BDSM kink-style drag. We're talking four-inch stiletto boots, fishnets, leather miniskirts, corsets.
Rachel, Rachel, I'm sorry. Let me interrupt. Our audience comment times by board policy have to do with issues that our district...
I'm getting there. I'm getting there. I promise. I promise.
Well, so far, that's, you're not in the ballpark.
I'm getting, I promise I'm getting there. May I continue, please? May I have my minutes reset? Thank you.
Well, from now.
All right. So, this librarian wears four-inch stiletto boots, fishnets, leather miniskirts.
That's not part of it. Get to the part with our school district.
Okay. I'm letting you know that this is inappropriate for anybody to be expressing themselves sexually in this way. Sex and children do not mix, and if they do, it's called pedophilia. So again, you're probably wondering why I'm here and why I'm at this school board meeting. Well, I'm here because this directly affects some of your students in the school district. There are many students that participate in your after-school programs, specifically those at Harden Middle School. On a weekly basis, they head down to the Katherine Lindeman Library, and guess who is in charge of these after-school programs at the library? You guessed it, it is this librarian in drag indoctrinating these young minds and influencing them in his ways. So I have a question to ask you. Are the parents of these students being groomed by this librarian aware of this? And I'm going to assume the answer is no, because the parents typically don't go into the library to pick up their teenager. I have a problem with that, and I know the majority of St. Charles has a problem with that, and so should you. So what are we going to do to make sure that these parents know that their child or children are being exposed, taught, and influenced by a man explicitly sexually expressing himself?
I'm sorry, Rachel. I'm sorry. I, you did mention that after-school programs through our school district that made, as you mentioned, Harden, taking classes down to the library, we can look, we can investigate and look into that, but you're still going adrift by talking about the librarian in particular, and that's not in our, in our domain.
Okay. Can we talk about the two Harden students that were caught having sex a few weeks ago at the Katherine Lindeman Library?
No, no, that is not, Katherine in the library is not...
Well, it should, it should be a concern for all of you, okay? Thank you so much for your time. Thank you for listening. This is a major concern in our community. Have a great evening.
Thank you, Rachel. Teresa Linsnick.
Okay, my name is Teresa Linsnick. I'm a mom of a St. Charles high grad and now Lindenwood University student. Do you want to help students have a vision for their college and career future, know the opportunities, as well as know how to get there? I'll tell you our story as far as finding a college. I was concerned, can my daughter afford college? Do I know enough about college to help my child? I wish there was another parent who knows about this stuff, who's recently been in this position, who can help me and my daughter. My daughter was thinking, can I afford college? What is the right college for me? It's rather overwhelming. An answer to my prayer came when my friend told me about Mentors for College, a local nonprofit that gives free service. I simply went to the website mentorsforcollege.org and signed up to request a volunteer mentor. And a local mother of four who went through the college decision process herself with her kids, and her youngest child has to, has special needs, helped me to feel relieved. She, she kind of held our hands going through the process of searching, applying, looking for scholarships, keeping us on time, explaining the process, answering our questions. My daughter Hope received scholarships, financial aid, and the satisfaction of having confidence she made a good choice. Mentors for College recognize that school counselors are stretched thin, and seeing this as a way to extend the school counselors' reach, they work to create a community of volunteer mentors to assist and support families in the college selection and application process. Their goal is to find the right fit for each student after high school. They partner with school districts, school counselors, volunteer parents and teachers to help students make more educated decisions on post-high school journeys. Let me see. Mentors for College are trained mentors, and they give free of their time helping students, preferably starting in the sophomore year of high school through senior and beyond. Mentors help students find what they want to do as a career and how to get there. They realize not everyone is cut out for college. They show students the possibilities and how to get there, be it a trade school or college. I believe if students have a vision for their future, it will give them a defined goal and that, and when they and their parents have helped getting there from parents who've been there, it makes all the difference. Please check out mentorsforcollege.org, and I really hope that we use it here in St. Charles School District because it's really helped us.
Thank you, Teresa.
Hello, everybody. I'm Joshua Wilcutt. I'm joined by my son Jake. I would like to thank, I would like to thank you all for implementing what I talked about last May. However, the work is far from over. I have printed off Special Education Assessments Profile from DESI from 2013 to present. I also consolidated the last two years into a book for each of you. Well, I only got five books. I apologize. And highlighted every single failed standard. You will find that every point that I spoke of in the May board meeting is accurate, and multiple standards that DESI had rates the district with has consistently been failed year after year. The book goes into much greater detail than Time Alots for this, sorry, for this speech. But here are two factors that I would ask for you to consider when reviewing it. Number one, the number in these reports represents a human being with unique challenges in their lives. Every failed standard also represents where the district has failed its constituents. The single year the district was rated as having a passing score in parental suppression, the other numbers went down. Year after year, the consistent repeated pattern is failures in early childhood and high disciplinary rates and dropouts in children with IEPs and parental suppression. In the books also contains notice of meetings in which the district held one IEP meeting for both my sons simultaneously to validate emails that I had sent the board, both this current board and the previous one. I wasn't being difficult, I was being defensive. As I stated before, I believe the teachers are amazing. My issues haven't been with the teachers. Also in the book is Board Policy BBA, which states in part, "The board is accountable to the electorate and shall be responsive to the educational needs and the financial constraints of the district," as well as other policies that are applicable and highlighted. Your attorney has been in contact with me over a records request, as you all are aware. It's just another example of how parents are being stonewalled in a ridiculous way of using district funds, but it's a tactic that's used quite often. So I ask all of you to review in accordance with policy BCG and how many times this tactic has been used as a parent exercising their rights, keeping in mind the ethical obligations your counsel has to you. If it's found you all after you review her emails to your constituents, I ask if your counsel is bullying or lying to the electorate.
Josh, I'm going to stop you for just a minute. Remember, part of the policy is referring to personalities, and when you talk about our district attorney, that can be identified. So you need to frame your discussion so that you're not specifically pointing out flaws in quote, "a district, our district attorney." You see what I'm saying about even though you are not using a name, it's identifiable. So you have to keep it a little bit more general.
Okay. If after you review emails that the constituents have received, you find any bullying or lying, I ask that the board quickly address this to allow parents' rights to be respected. It's important to note that if a parent's rights are respected from the start, then there's no need to consult an attorney. The need to consult an attorney would be considerably less, reducing overall costs. Sorry. I know there's a lot of points here, so you'll be getting emailed a copy of this by the evening for clarity purpose. The only way...
Joshua, she, she did allow my interruption. So your time limit, which just dinged, is still used up. Can you, can you finish up your thought for us, please?
The last, the last thing I just wanted to mention to you guys is reviewing of the past helps correct the future. Reviewing mistakes of the past and preventing past mistakes from repeating itself helps correct the future. I'm not bringing up the past to dredge up old stuff. I'm bringing up the past so we can learn from it and move on, and that's where I'm coming from. The other thing is Jake made you all bookmarks.
He did. Thank you, Jake. Good job. Thank you, Jake. Thank you, Josh and Jake. Thank you for the bookmarks. Thank you. All right. Before we proceed with the rest of the board meeting, this is the point where we take a five-minute short break. For those of you who want to enjoy the rest of the summer evening, this is your chance Well, thank you all for staying. I didn't see a single person leaving to enjoy the weather.
Just on a quick note, real quick, just so everybody knows, we are having difficulties with getting it live. So Chris Bennett in the back is working hard to do that, so if you see things swirling, that's what he's trying to do. It is being recorded, and then we hopefully can, we can post it then, correct?
Yeah, I understand. I have a second to record. Is it all posted tomorrow? I have a second to record.
I just want to make sure everybody knew that, okay?
Okay. Item 3.06, do I have a motion to amend or adopt the agenda?
I make a motion to amend the agenda, please.
Yes. Okay. You need to let me know ahead of time that you were going to, you want to amend the agenda?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And we have a second? Do we have a, all those?
He wants to amend.
He wants to amend the agenda. Do you want to second that? I don't know. Okay. Just on protocol, when, when we're going to, remember, when you're going to amend something off the consent, if you let the president know before the meeting so I can, I'm kind of prepared for the...
Sorry, it's, it's nothing big. I just want...
That's okay. I just, that's why I hesitated. I thought, wait a minute, I wasn't ready for the, for a change. But right now, we have a motion to amend the agenda and remove item 4.09. Do I have a second for that?
I'll second.
Okay. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. So we're going to remove item 4.09 to item 5.01. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
I move we approve the agenda as amended.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. That's approved, and we are ready for item 5.01, and so I will turn this over to Brian for the...
Perfect. Thank you, yes. And I don't know what Brendan was going to bring up, but, and I know, and I apologize, you can discipline me later. I apologize. You can get home next time. You know, I spoke about this, and my big concern is, and I have a parent, I'm a parent of a special needs kid, and, and I know how these cell phones are a big issue, and that was my big thing on this, and I just wanted to bring it up and just see what else the board thought, because, you know, I go into and I see what the effects are on my son, and I see the effects of what it does to all the other kids. I see every kid walking around with this constantly. I know it's an issue in the schools. I know it's an issue. I've talked with teachers, I've talked with other administrators, I've talked to a lot of people about the cell phones, and they're a problem. And I know we feel that we got a good handle on it, but I just want to bring it up and think about it, because I know there's, there's so many different things here, and I, and I've got some things off of the National Institute of Health and just things I've done in my own life, and it says increases in mental distress, self-injury, injurious behavior, suicidal behavior, dose-response relationship, you know, the, the effects of, of how much these kids are getting. The effects of it, and I see, you know, when we walked around, I saw that kids would whip those things out as soon as they got out of class. And I know it's hard, it's got to be difficult for our teachers. We don't, I don't want to put that on our teachers either, but, and there's got to be these boundaries on these kids. We're the adults here, we're the parents, we make the decisions for our kids because we know what's best for our kids. And, and I don't see the purpose, and I'm not saying, because I know there'd be a lot of parent backlash if I said, hey, I wouldn't want any phones in the school. That, that's not what I'm asking here. I'm just saying, they, I don't think they should be seen during the day. I think they're a huge distraction to our students, to our teachers, to our staff, to everything. So I just think, and I see the things, the relationships they have, the self-harm, the normalization, the cyberbullying that goes on. I can't, I can't imagine what a kid goes through if he's being cyberbullying during school, during class, and it goes on. I know it goes on, you know? So those are some of the things I want to talk about. I just want to bring it to our attention. I'm not, I'm not asking for a change. I just, I just want to bring it to the board's attention, and if this is something we want to look deeper into, I, I think there's a possibility that we may, might need to, you know?
I agree. I would suggest that we think about forming a task force with teachers and parents and students. We have the power to form a committee, but...
Okay. And I'd be happy, I'm passionate about it, because I'd be happy to lead that, that thing. I mean, I want our school to be the best. If we did some change, policy change, I'm sure our policies are in line with most other schools. You know, I'd as well like to be the, the lead school in making a, a good change.
And I, you're not alone. I think every, every school, every, every, every parent, we live in this, in an age of of cell phones, and it's one of these, you know, damn it if you do and damn it if you don't. I mean, there are as many parents who would object to us restricting their child's right to having that cellphone for emergencies or having that cellphone, and yes, it's, it's abused, and so maybe it would be a committee that, but boy, that's going to be a tough committee. And I mean, there's, there is no right answer for any of that.
Right, yeah.
So I don't know, Earl, this might fall under like the curriculum and stuff. Can we get a small subcommittee going, do you think, with...
Absolutely. I mean, are we wanting this before, prior to the start of school?
No, I don't think, I don't think you're asking to change anything in our code of...
No, no, I'm not asking to change anything. I just want, I just want to get something in motion, maybe that there is a, a big need or a big want out there that says, hey, we, we would like a change, you know? And I'm not saying, yeah, we got to have an hour to do this, but just something to get, I don't know, ball rolling in that direction.
We can absolutely form a committee to look at cellphone and what we can do, policies that we can create.
Because I, you guys, I know, just forming up the, the student handbook and code of conduct, went through a lot of it and tweaked it and always do, so absolutely. I think we're good to go.
The code of conduct has everything in there, just shy of saying, if you have it, it's getting taken away. It's, it's encouraged that you don't have it, that you turn it off, that you put it in, you shouldn't have it in your classroom. It's up to a teacher discretion. But I think it's worthwhile to investigate further if there's, I guess, I'll call it more teeth to apply if it's something that we think is valuable for all of the things that are said.
It will be, it will be absolute, it's something we cannot, and it's not that it hasn't been done. Maybe it has been by a formal committee, but I know it's, it's, when they review the code of conduct, it's absolutely discussed and looked into, but as I said, all of us can agree, it's a topic that you're not going to have the solution to.
Yeah, because I think you have teacher-by-teacher opinion, and you're also going to have very, varying parent opinions.
Parents' opinions, too, so...
And the problem is enforcement. I, you know, you don't want the teachers to have to spend so much time enforcing a policy that they're not having enough teaching time, or administrators, or suspensions, or this, I mean, it's going to rack up some discipline. And anytime you require a student to do something like wear an ID or not carry their cellphone, you're...
Not chewing gum in my day, and then you spend all your time saying spit the gum out, when I could be, you know, I'm not saying cell phones, but...
I wish they weren't in the classroom.
Just the fact that they can't use it in, in, in school time doesn't necessarily stop when, when Suzie or whoever goes home and all of these, you know, cyberbullying is there waiting for them on their phone. I don't know how any of that can play out. We live in such a, an age of intrusion into our, in our world with these cell phones, and I, and we all live with them. So, yeah, let's, I, if we can go, if we're in agreement and we can vote on the code of conduct, but look into forming a committee to look a little bit more, and maybe there's not much more we can do, other than just we're aware of it and whatever the committee decides.
Just, just verbal support to get the phones out of the classroom and just involve people more in that decision, the students and the teachers and the, without making it a disciplinary issue, more of a, let's just all agree to kind of do this, not get the, you know? I think a committee's a good idea.
And I will just say two cents, because Brendan, you and I have talked about this a little bit via email. Committee's great, we can look at it. I can just tell you, and to Daniel's point, our policy right now allows for our teachers to have this in discretion. It does basically say that you can't have it on unless it's pertinent to it. So we're, we're kind of at that sweet spot in terms of the balance to it. So you either go all in and just let the cell phones go, which we're not going to do that, or the other peo, and I'm not, we can have a committee, but I'm just telling you, this is kind of, this is what's going to happen. There are devices out there, they, they're pretty expensive, couple of districts do it. I've looked into some of this a little bit, too, not, not like in-depth, but there are some devices out there that actually stop the use of cell phones in schools, like in, like you could block it. I'm not saying we're doing, I mean, I'm sure, but that's, that's what, that, that's like the next, that's what you're looking at if you're going to go from what we're going to that, but we'll have the committee to look at it. It just, and like you said, somebody said, you're going to have millions of, of different ideas and re, and just angles to it, but committee can look at it and we'll go from there, so.
That's a good point.
Yeah, that's all I asked. That's all I was asking.
Then on item 5.01, the student, 22, 23, 24 student handbook and code of conduct, do I have a motion to approve that?
I move to approve item 5.01.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That, that passes. Item 6.01, our counseling program review.
I think you failed to approve the consent agenda.
No, we did.
You did.
Remember, as amended.
Okay, okay. All right.
All right. Thank you, Chris.
Somebody has to keep me going.
All right. I've got my notes to kind of keep me on track and not go too long, so Earl can go on vacation.
That's why we have Earl sitting there.
All right. So, all right, so this is our guidance and counseling program eval. We do this every two years, so this is since July of 2021. Do you want to go to the next page, Chris? Okay. So the St. Charles School District provides counseling services grades K through 12. So the guidance curric, or the guidance programs grouped in a... So the guidance curriculum, or the guidance programs grouped into four different components. The curriculum, the individual student planning, responsive services, and system support. And so if you kind of scroll down to the next one, Chris, this is kind of a little pie view of a representation of the percentage of time the counselors spend on each of those four components. So with the early grades, the largest amount of time is spent more on the curriculum and responsive services. And as students get a little older, the majority of time is more on that individual planning and the responsive services. And I'll kind of go into what those responsive services are in a little bit. So our guidance curriculum is the curriculum that you all just approved last, or last year. I did find a typo, I put May, I meant June in our, in my report. So, within that, one of our curriculum goals was that the City of St. Charles School District would develop and implement the K to twelve guidance curriculum that reflects the most recently developed guidance content standards and grade level expectations for grades K through twelve. So the current guidance curriculum that was adopted last board meeting was about, I think it was about seven years old. So it's brand new, up to date with Desi's grade level expectations in the areas of social, emotional, academic, and curricular development, or career development, sorry. Counselors regularly deliver guidance activities in each school through planned classroom visits, outlined on the master schedule, so they're built in, as well as through assemblies, college and career fairs on the school calendar. In addition to these, intermediate and middle schools participate in conflict mediation mentoring programs. At the middle and high schools, they participate in Missouri Connections, they complete interest inventories and develop personal plans of studies. The counselors also provide opportunities such as senior parent night, where they do talk about some of those things that Teresa had talked about earlier with financial aid, applying for colleges, finding the right schools, things like that. Counselors also make sure that we have lunch visits from colleges, military, there's summer work experiences and internships, newsletters that go home to parents and families, and they offer their time at parent-teacher conferences. So there are three areas to the curriculum, social, emotional development, academic development, and career development. Okay, this individual planning piece here, that this individual planning is completed with students to assure a successful transition to post-secondary education and work, and we start, believe it or not, in elementary school. Our goal, one of our goals was that beginning no later than seventh grade, the City of St. Charles School District would ensure that each student participates in the individual planning process. When we do MSIP review, you hear a lot about ICAPs and how each student has to have an ICAP, that's what that individual planning process, that's the work that's done there. It's designed to assist in a successful transition to post-secondary experiences. So middle schoolers participate in a career program and complete the interest profile that provides results based on their interests, and that's what they use to develop their career pathways and develop the ICAP. The information also assists in making decisions about the students' high school courses they take during their high school years. Then they annually review and they modify their ICAP because their interests change, their ideas about maybe about what they're gonna do post-secondary change. Okay, Chris, next one. So the elementary and intermediate guidance program, they focus at this level on understanding themselves, as individuals respecting each other, safety skills, coping strategies, educational achievement, transitioning to the next school or grade level, future career choices, and like their personal strengths and weaknesses. So as we kind of move through the next few, like on this screen, I have a couple of our, kind of the successes and some of the needs I kind of picked from some of the surveys. Now, these surveys, let me just kind of explain, our counselors send out surveys to, to either student, staff, or teachers. This is the one that was done this year, it went out to students. And we have one group, it's K through, it's K through, K through six. And then there's a middle school grouping on here, and then there's a high school grouping. One of our high school counselors was kind of having difficulty with sending it to the, to the schools. So they didn't get culminated all into one high school one, we have, I ended up with one West and one High. And for the life of me, I could not figure out how to, because I used the graphs from Google, and I could not figure out how to, I even went to our Google expert. So if you notice, when you get to the high school, you have a West side and a High side because they were, the same, the same link wasn't shared. So that's kind of what happened there, so I apologize for that. But, in elementary, on this page, you can see that eighty-four point three percent of our students strongly agree or, strongly agree or agree that they want to get good grades in school and they know how to earn them, so that's a strength. Six point two, sixty-two point eight of our students strongly agree, so they rated fives, that they recognize and respect people that are different from them, so I thought that was really cool. I should kind of go to the next page. One of the things I saw here, there's a need, I mean, and these are not the only needs or the only strings on here, but just some things that kind of sit out to me. Forty-five percent of our students strongly agree that they like themselves. You kind of wish that, you know, most kids would, at least more than half of our kids would strongly agree that they like themselves. So that was down just a little bit from our 2021 survey. And only fifty-three percent of our students rated themselves as either strongly agree or agree when they asked if they think of options for solving problems, solving a problem before they choose the best solution, so. On the next page, and I know it's hard to read some of these, I'd be happy to, I know the board has these, but these are easier to read if you're actually on the site, I believe. Ninety percent of our students strongly agree that they know the dangers of using drugs and alcohol in the elementary all throughout sixth grade. Only sixty percent of students, or fifty-nine point one percent of students rated themselves as either strongly agree or agreeing when asked that they know what to do to make things better when bad things happen in life, so. And then, you know, as we kind of move on through the rest of that, we also show good numbers for like good study skills, test-taking strategies, and how to manage time well and organize assignments. So that's kind of the information from our elementary kiddos. Our middle school guidance program, they focus on, and just so you know, the questions that are on the survey come from Desi, Desi's website has a, and you might know this Karen, has a, has a sample survey for us. So we just use the surveys that they have provided. So, middle school guidance program, at this level, the focus is on being successful, understanding health, personal responsibility and safety, academic success, transitioning from Jefferson, from Jefferson and then to the high school, we have a lot of transitions, exploring and planning future career options and personal strengths and weaknesses, but more on a career focus. Okay, Chris, thank you. So on this first one, the one I was gonna point out here, was that eighty-one percent of our students, this is a success, rated themselves as a four or five as knowing and using the skills they need to be successful in school. On the next page, only thirty percent of our students strongly agree that they participate in activities that help them become a contributing member of their community. So that's something we could definitely work on. Eighty-three percent of students rated themselves as a four or five in knowing what is expected of them at the next grade level. And with having so many transitions, I think that's pretty high. So I think we have so many transitions, so we plan accordingly and know that like, that's something that we have to really work on. So that was pretty good, I thought. Okay, next page, Chris. Seventy-six percent of our students rated themselves as a four or five when asked if they were able to maintain quality relationships with others. That's in middle school, I thought that was pretty impressive. And then only forty-two percent strongly, strongly agree that they interact, or with others in ways that respect individual and group differences. I think that's pretty high for a middle schooler, forty-two percent strongly agree they do that? I mean, and this is their perspective, you know, so, yeah, that's great. So those are some of the things I picked out, again, from the middle school group, and if you, from the middle school surveys. And that, I went over those, so I already, yeah. High school guidance program, so as we get to this level, the focus is more on understanding themselves and how then they fit into that global society. And respecting differences, applying safety skills and coping strategies, educational achievement, transitioning between levels, future career options, and identifying personal strengths and weaknesses. So our guidance program, if, as you noticed, through each grade, through each level, really focuses on some of the same things, like strengths and weaknesses are a huge thing, safety, understanding themselves, those are really focused on. So as we get into those surveys, again, on the left, you have St. Charles High, on the right, you have St. Charles West. We have quite a few more responses from High, we have two hundred and eighty responses from High and ninety-nine from West, bigger, smaller school, but it's quite a big difference in the responses. So as we kind of go through here, this first page, seventy-seven percent of students at High and eighty percent of students at West agree or strongly agree that they know how to apply the skills needed for educational success. Also, if you go to the next one, only thirty-five percent of our students at High and forty-one percent of students at West scored a four or five for monitoring and revising their ICAPs for lifelong learning. So with us kind of, if that's a huge component of MSIP and the expectation that everybody needs to have them, then these students are saying they're not really updating those and keeping those updated, revising them as they move on through high school. So that's something we could look at focusing more on. On the next page, seventy-four percent of our students at High and seventy-five at West say they are able to maintain quality relationships with others, that means they ranked a four or five. Only sixty-three percent of students were able to prioritize and balance personal, family, social work, social, or school, work, and community roles. Only sixty percent of students participated in activities that helped them become a contributing member of the community. That was also something that we kind of saw as a need for Harden, so, you know, maybe that's something we need to look at trying to get kiddos more involved. On the next page, seventy-seven percent of students rated themselves as four or five for taking personal responsibility for problem-solving and conflict resolution. And eighty-three percent say they interact with others in ways that respect individual and group differences. So that was our high school needs assessment. So as we kind of get through that piece and move on down to that third section of our curriculum, or our counseling program, responsive services are a huge piece of both elementary, middle, and high school curriculum, or I keep saying curriculum program, counseling program, sorry about that. Responsive services are those services that help students whose personal circumstances and problems threaten academic career and personal success. So those are in the form of individual and small group counseling, consultation, or referral. A lot of, some of our MOUs from tonight that you approved on business services are services that we get from community agencies even, where they're able to come in and help our students with, without our students having to pay for services in our district, so very, very helpful. Students are also, also receive individual counseling and community agency referrals to address mental health needs through partners such as Compass, who's out in our audience today, Preferred, and the Megan Meyer Foundation, and more, you know, as we talked about in here, we have Lutheran Family Services, CHADS, you know, there's all kinds of community partners that we actually utilize through the district. Our third goal for our program review was that each student in the St. Charles School District would have equitable access to responsive services and resources to assist them in addressing issues and concerns that may affect their academic career and social, emotional needs. If a student needs individual or group counseling, we are pretty much able to provide the names of resources to families or figure out a way to provide those ourselves, which is amazing. I've worked in different school districts along the way, and the resources are not as plentiful as we have here. I know you all know that. Of, all of the following services are available to students within our school, individual, small group, and crisis counseling. Consultation is regularly utilized in addition to the above services, both counseling and consultations delivered by school counselors, district social workers, and outside agencies such as Compass, Preferred, Lutheran Family Services, et cetera, at no charge to family and students, so very lucky there. Another goal we had for our counseling program was that we will partner with community agencies and businesses in order to support our students experiencing problems that might be interfering with their personal, social, academic, or career development. So on top of all those partners that I discussed before, we are a Care to Learn chapter, which I know you all are very aware of what Care to Learn does, where we can provide funding and resources as it relates to health, hunger, and hygiene. We partner with, we love St. Charles to walk alongside our families, they provide all kinds of things, you know, that we talked about it, as well as just relationships, resources, clothing, school supplies, you know, backpacks, coats, et cetera. So, you know, we, I feel like with that goal, we definitely have done that, and we just, we just partnered with Aspen for the beginning of next year, which is another resource. Like, when we can find a resource to help our kiddos, we try to do our best to get them involved, so that every kiddo has their needs met. Alright, so the responsive service topics, you can see here, I think, Chris, oh yeah, next one, Chris, the topics. Those are some, oh, yep, you're right there. Those are some of the topics that we, that kids most are more than likely dealing with when they're working with one of our counselors, social workers, teachers, outside agencies. They're working on things such as, you know, death in the family, divorce, suicide, abuse, all of those, any of those topics listed above. Alright, as we move along to our system support, so this component is the fourth component, this is more of your day-to-day operations. So this is implemented through program management, so the activities we do annually, our budgets, our, you know, our counselors do duties, they, they do professional development, consultation, collaboration, they're part of committees. We meet at least two to three times a year and have counselor and social work meetings here in the boardroom. And so they are a part of the same types of programs and experiences that are, the rest of our staff in the district are. So our goal here for number, our number five goal on our program was that the guidance program for the district would be supported by appropriate staffing, professional development for counselors, performance evaluations, mentoring for new counselors, and collaboration, relationships with stakeholders. When we did this back in 2021, our counseling, well, first of all, our counseling numbers, sorry, that, it's not on the slide, it was, it was on the report, sorry. I was trying to condense it a little into not too many slides, so. Sorry, yeah, when we were. Yeah, when we did our counseling program in 2021, and Karen, maybe, I don't know exactly maybe when this changed, but when, when I was looking at Desi's numbers, they were going by the Missouri School Counselor numbers. Now, when you get on and you look at their, their numbers, they want you to go by the American School Counselor Association. So, back in 2021, and even now, our counselors have some of the lowest caseloads in the entire county, by like a hundred kids. Yes. But I also see that according to the American School Counselor Association, they want you to have one for every two hundred and fifty students, and we don't meet that in every school. Harden, Monroe, Harris, and Coverdale. But, one thing we do have that, I don't know any other district in the county, and I know they don't, is we have social workers in each of our high school, one full one, one at Harden, one at Jefferson, one that splits our, three of our elementaries, and one that has the other three elementaries. And we do have very small elementaries compared to the rest of the county, so.
Are they permanent and full-time, are they a temporary and shared?
I'm getting there.
Okay.
So yeah, our, yes, our, our elementary ones are shared, and we have one at early childhood. The one at early childhood is covered by our ECSE grant. And then, two of them currently, so when I started in the district ten years ago, we had one, and we had two, then we had three, then we had four. So right now, we currently have, is it eight, one? So right now, we currently have, is it eight, one? Seven social workers. Two of them, we're using ESSER funds to provide that, too. So this is the third year that they have been with us. That's the one at Harden and the one at Jefferson. And so before we had those two positions, then they were just split a little bit, a little bit more. We had a counselor in each of our big schools, and then we had, each of them had like one or two elementaries.
But they're coming back this year?
Yes, they are. So.
I have one more quick question while I'm on the mic here. How did you, how did you handle the needs assessment? Were the stu, how was it administered? Was it administered in a classroom? Were the, did the guidance counselors enter the data?
The guidance counselors provided the link to the students, and they filled it out. So in the high school, I believe they sent it to their emails. And those high school students, like, I don't, and I don't know 100% sure exactly when or how it was administered. When we've talked about it in the past, that's what they did for the high school. For the middle school, I believe it was similar. I know for our elementary, it was the, when they go in and do the lessons, I believe they took a class, like one of the class periods, and they got on with the students and helped them. It was a Google, a Google form? Is that serving? Google form. And so the counselors would go with our little ones, and they would help read it, and if they had any questions, they would kind of explain what the questions meant.
Yeah, there's definitely an issue, though, with the difference in the responses that you got from the two high schools. There needs to be a more uniform method for administering it.
Well, maybe it's not because of the way it's administered. Maybe it's just the difference in their perception.
With the number of students, you mean?
99 to 300 and some, is that what it was?
280.
280 versus 99, and the size of the school isn't that different.
Oh, it's a couple, it's a couple.
Couple hundred.
It's like.
So 99 is a percentage that would be?
It's not as far off as you would think. We have, what, 650 or six at west and like 950 at high? Something like that.
Mike, I would like to see every student respond to it. And to figure out a way, but to figure out a way that that could be done. And it could be.
Well, especially if, as I'm listening, it sounds like it is, in order to remove any influence of a guidance counselor or a teacher or someone hovering or doing it as a class, it's sent to each student, so that it's their individual response. It's pretty tough to, to make sure they.
I'm sure there could be some motivators.
Yeah, well, there might be a motivator, I don't know.
At least to get a few more, yeah.
Ice cream sundae, I don't.
Yeah, I would just be concerned about the kind of answers you would get from the students who chose to not respond at all.
Mm-hmm, yeah. So, all right, so I'm almost finished here. So I kind of went, already went into, all the five through 12 buildings have full-time social workers. Oh, and then the other piece that we have, I think that, well, no other districts have it, because we made it up, is our RTI specialists. Those are another big position in those buildings to help support our counselors. So where some of those are a little over the 250, we have an RTI specialist also in there to really support the social emotional needs of our students and behaviors, and, you know, they'll pull them out when they're struggling and talk to them, you know. So they're another big support. Our social workers, RTI specialists, and counselors in our buildings really work really well as teams, so. So district counselors also develop their own professional growth plans. They're evaluated each year the way our teachers are, using TalentEd. Huh?
We're talking about the temperature.
I can't hardly see you guys.
We are paying attention. I am.
Okay.
It's got really hot.
Yeah.
I'm always hot, so.
Yep, so, and then they also, they are also provided the same PD opportunities. They are provided with mentors, and just like the rest of our staff. So, and we kind of talked about this a little bit already. Chris, you want to go to the last slide? The student needs assessment that was distributed by our counselors does show that we, the students are growing and becoming competent in their social, academic, and career skills. Because of their help, they are receiving, because of the help they're receiving from the guidance program. But there's also some room for growth here. So some of the things that I kind of picked from that and that are in the actual written report were that we probably, again, want to take a look at getting alternate input from parents, staff, and students, which we were doing on an annual basis. COVID kind of threw some, threw it in that one year, and we kind of got off cycle, so we ended up on the student year again this time. The results of the 2023 needs assessment, we're actually going to take these results, which we haven't done a whole lot of. We've shared it with our counselors, but have a good conversation about it at our September meeting, and, you know, try to do some action planning from there. And then also really taking a look at the ICAP and some of the numbers with, you know, the students that are actually looking at their ICAP, kind of using that to kind of help plan for their future, making sure that we're kind of trying to focus on that. And then the last piece of it would be the caseloads. And again, where we look really, really good compared to the rest of the world, probably, not just.
The world, wow.
Yeah. Maybe not world, St. Louis world, yes.
I've seen case loads of five hundred.
Yes, yes. We still want to just make sure that we aren't, that we're taking a look at that as those, as those social work positions could possibly fall off because of the ESSER funds. So we would want to make sure that we're addressing the kids' needs through staffing, so. That is all I have. Hopefully that was not too long.
And just to piggyback on that, first of all, Julie did a great job, great information.
Lots of good information. Any questions?
Those, those staff members who are in all those positions for us, just like our other staff, but they do a phenomenal job.
Yes, they are.
Of meeting kids' needs and working, and we want to support them. And some of those positions might have to go away because of ESSER funds, but we're doing everything we can to make sure we're putting the support where it needs to be. Those RTI specialists are huge job, huge positions that other districts don't have, so Julie, excellent job.
Thanks. Any questions?
Thank you, Julie. That really was lots of good information, and we were asking questions along the way, so. Do I have a motion to approve the counseling program review?
I move to approve the counseling program review as presented.
Do I have a second?
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. I am 7.01. This is the resolution for the Lewis and Clark contract.
Mr. Shields, I'll let you take it away, and I'll probably add something, because we're really excited about it.
Yeah, we are, absolutely. So the Lewis and Clark home, obviously, was completed much sooner than last year, but it follows the typical timeline of when a home does go up for sale. So we were able to hit the summer market. Still a very healthy, very attractive market for home buyers, for sellers, and for buyers, especially here in St. Charles. So what, the listing price was a very good number, and we exceeded that number with this contract. So we're just recommending to the board to accept the contract so we could move forward with that sale and get busy with the third home.
And the quality of the work, and it speaks for itself for what the contract is. It's just amazing, so.
Any comments on the, do I have a motion to approve the resolution of Lewis and Clark's sale?
I move to approve the resolution of the board for the Lewis and Clark sale contract for the 514 Dover Drive, St. Charles, Melrose, 6331 is presented.
That's all. Do I have a second? See, that's a lot shorter than what you had to do. Okay, all those in favor, aye? Opposed? Well, that resolution passes.
May I say that was almost Mrs. Malone-esque? Remember how Mrs. Merida used to, she used to read them?
I moved it, I moved.
That was impressive, because she was pretty good at that.
I think you were channeling that, because I.
Keep moving forward, sorry about that.
You're right. Item 7.02, a student medical clinic bid.
This is really exciting as well, but Mr. Shields, I'm gonna let you take it for, and I'm excited, too much information, I need to use a restroom, I'll be back.
I'm actually sad he's missing it. So, so this is a, is an item that's relatively new to us as far as consideration goes. We've certainly had some communication via email, but we've not had any public conversation regarding a student health clinic. So in March, late March, we began meeting with Compass Health about the possibility of starting a student health clinic from a district perspective. And Katrina McDonald with Compass Health, who's in attendance today, is one of the main orchestrators behind bringing this to the district and then engaging us in conversation. So this is in our CSET plan as a five-year potential goal to address, so it's certainly something, that's certainly something that caught my attention as well. But I'll tell you, from a, from a building principal perspective, not even necessarily related to COVID, but just a societal need for access for our students. Whether, regardless of financial situation, access is very important. Because as you guys know, the public servant market, even the health market is certainly struggling with professional staff. And to even get in with a sick visit for a child is increasingly difficult. So if I'm a parent and I'm being sent home by a school district, and one of the things that is suggested to me potentially is strep throat, it may, you may not get into the doctor that day. It's, it's very, very difficult. What is even more difficult is knowing a tremendous amount of our families, our single-parent families who are working. And that's increasingly difficult for them to leave work, pick up their child, and then get them to a medical appointment. So we're seeing that more and more often. I saw it a lot as a building principal. I heard a lot of frustration from parents, especially when children were being sent home and not being able to have access to a medical facility. So that certainly drives me from an emotional standpoint. And then from a practicality standpoint as well. I think it's important for that consideration. So the other thing is, is what we're noticing as a school district, and you guys see it in our MSIP reports, our attendance rates, they plummet. And some of that is just based on what medical best practice is, is, you know, if a child has a fever, do not return for 24 hours. Or if it's a strep throat-related incident, or whatever the case may be. Some parents do not want their child to come back until they see a medical professional. And like I said, it's very, very difficult to get into a medical office within a 12-hour period, let's say that, so they can come back to school the next day. You know, we could go on and on about that. So, you know, there's a lot of benefits, I believe, into us at least exploring the feasibility and the possibility of having Compass Health manage a student health clinic for us. One of the, you know, I wouldn't say it was a difficult part, but one of the parts that we've discussed is where to house this, which would be at Blackhurst Elementary. And at Blackhurst, centrally located, as centrally located as you can get in this district, we would think. And it has exterior access where they would not have to go through a front office. It also has ADA accessible parking that we could make work. And that's very important to us, to where the building operations, from an academic standpoint, would not be impacted whatsoever with the use and utilization of this specific room, which is on the north end of that building. So the second, the second part we had to look at then was, is that good for Compass Health? Is that room good for Compass Health? And if it is, what are the costs associated with turning that from a traditional classroom space into a medical facility? So Compass was kind enough to offer up their services of their architect, who we met on site. And they created an architectural plan for us to then go out to bid on, if the board would accept this as a potential to go out, as a potential for us to go out to bid on. So the big question with this becomes, you know, one, is it something that the board would want us to consider moving forward on? And two, is it financially practical for us to consider it? And, you know, one of the questions that I've received this week is, you know, what account are we going to spend this money from to develop and create this clinic? We believe through informal conversations that it's very possible we won't touch our general fund to get this clinic, to pay for this clinic. We believe there's potential from two specific areas. One, ESSER funding, because we would be planning for a future pandemic by creating this clinic. That is, with certainty, we could get funding through that. But then there's another option, and you guys know this option very well, if it's approved from a formal standpoint, and formally the conversations have occurred through Care to Learn, who does have a respectable balance of money. And it certainly would meet their goal of health, hunger, and hygiene to help fund this service. Like I said previously, it would be managed entirely by Compass Health. They would take the reins of it. Another aspect that I think is really cool, sorry if I'm speaking way too long on this, is, and I'm really excited, because I've met with the lead nurse in our district who has taken this information, this was back in April, to the nursing staff, because one of my concerns was, is it too much for our nursing staff to not only manage the prescriptions through our clinics on a daily basis, but then begin to offer telehealth services to the medical provider at Blackhurst, if it's strep throat, if it's pink eye, if it's something that they can do a telehealth option with the Compass Health provider? And the nursing staff is very excited about this as a possibility. Compass has even had the conversation with the district about providing our nurses with the equipment for the telehealth option to become a reality for us. So that's another exciting and intriguing possibility that I think would happen if this were to occur. So this is something that I know Dr. Seifert is extremely excited about, and here I am speaking about it, but.
Julie did a wonderful job.
But we are all excited, and I know Compass Health, and I don't want to minimize their excitement either. They have got it set up where we meet every day, every week, on Wednesdays at 4:30 for a conference, where we're just sharing and exchanging ideas to see how this partnership will continue to grow and how we can make this a better.
Well, quite honestly, real quick, Jeremy, we wouldn't be here if it wasn't for Compass.
Exactly.
In my opinion. I mean, they've just, it's just amazing how they've come alongside us and has provided that support of what they can and can't do. They can do a lot, and we, it just, it's a pretty neat partnership we're forming, so.
Yeah, and I put an estimate number of $200,000 on there. So where does that come from? You guys know this market. So I put it out there because when I ask an architect, what's it cost for a square footage to demo classroom? One, that demo of a classroom is not going to be much, right? But it's the renovation of it. And they laugh, typically they laugh and say, I'm not supposed to answer that question, and not in today's market. So, you know, you hear $100 a square foot for a project like this. So I went ahead and made it 200. So when you see the 200,000, that's where I, I don't want to, I don't want to underestimate on any of these projects. So when I'm speaking to a Care to Learn, or I'm speaking to, or I'm looking at ESSER funding, that's the number I'm saying, can we achieve it? And I'm not going low on this.
I have a few questions. How would this work? The school nurses would call up the center at Blackhurst and have their questions answered? Or do children leave their home school? You know, how would this work? Is it after school?
It would certainly be during school hours, for the in-person especially, but also during the telehealth piece. And our nurses would prompt the parents to use this clinic as a resource, focusing heavily on some of our disadvantaged socioeconomic families. But any family could utilize the services of it.
Uh-huh.
Can I help with a question, too? But to answers more specifically, there's the tele.
Telehealth?
Thing, telehealth part of it, where the nurses can talk to the doctor, but then the children can be, they're. but then the children can be, their, their parents can take them to the clinic during the day. So it's two, there's two pieces to that.
Correct, that's accurate.
So when they pick them up immediately, they can go right to that clinic?
Or they're home because they're sick and then come in, and they come in. And it's kind of, except for the tele, oh, it's a telehealth. It's kind of like our staff clinic. Our staff can go during the day, and it's open, and it's accessible that way, so.
How many students would you estimate that would take advantage of this?
We would hope, correct me if I'm wrong on this, Katrina, in our conversations, we were looking at 20, or 20, we had 20-plus students with that practitioner in the office. That would be a desired outcome initially.
20 what, a day?
20 a day. So we'd have a couple ways of looking at starting this. You know, we want to start small. We don't want to grow this big program and then have it understaffed and underutilized, right?
We're not in the healthcare business.
Right, so Compass is thankfully.
Yeah, right.
So we would have, we had discussed having a two-day in-person and then a three-day telehealth to begin with and see what the numbers look like.
Ella made a good point that many of us, I think, think about, and that is, no, we're a school district, we're not in the healthcare business. But, but our society is such that I think we are, we have-
We've got to take up the slack.
We do.
For everything, yeah.
And as we've been talking tonight about so many things that this district does for our students and families that aren't directly academic, when, in, in, well, in the old days, when people would say school, it was like reading right, and you're done. But now it's the backpack programs and the lunches for those and clinics. At this, if we could swing something like this, at least I'd like to investigate it and see, see where we go with it. But the, the sharing of ideas and the, and the initial creative opportunity that Compass is working with us, that we can provide students more care that they may not be able to get immediately, or may not get at all, and we can help with that during the day, answer questions, that telehealth would be, even, even that alone would be a great asset to our nurses.
And the 200,000 is for the demolition and then the building of a clinic?
Correct.
And who would pay for the operating, operating expenses?
Compass Health would, would pay for that, that portion.
Okay.
Yeah, including outfitting of the, of the space.
Okay.
Which, medical equipment's very expensive, so that's going to far exceed the cost that we would put in it. Not to say that that's a considering factor or anything, because we have to look at our costs only, but they are committed to outfitting that with medical.
So our obligation is providing the facility?
The space. And affordability, what is the fee schedule based on for Compass Health?
Katrina, do you, can you answer that one for me, because I have no clue?
Yeah, come on up. Thanks for being here today.
Did a great job of explaining it. I'm Katrina McDonald Fuller from Compass. So we are a federally qualified health center, which means we serve those without insurance, Medicaid. That's our primary population. We also take commercial. But we offer a sliding fee scale for those that are uninsured. They may, their fee may be zero based on income, but no child would be turned away because of lack of ability to pay. We will figure that part out, and we have funding to allow that. I'm sorry?
I said, now you're talking.
Oh, okay, okay.
That's why she's here. Jimmy did a great job.
Yes, he did.
This is not their first road, it's ours, but.
And you know, I would encourage the board, Google it. There are school-based medical clinics all across our country. And you know, our goal is to keep your children in school and the parents at work. And our hope is that children come to this clinic, and we do what we need to do. There's a prescription already waiting for them at their preferred pharmacy, and the parents pick it up on the way home, and there is no downtime at work. We have a lot of parents that struggle, and they lose employment because they're out of work so often. So that's our goal, is to keep your children at school.
Katrina, do you know of any places around here that is doing it, or districts close by?
Sure.
I mean, we could have an example of.
Sure, Wentzville is doing it with Mercy. I think ours would be different than what they're doing a little bit. But you would have an administrative assistant, you would have an APRN, a nurse practitioner, and an LPN here that would serve your district.
And as far as liability goes, where does that lie?
We would assume the liability for the care, the practitioners, the providers that would be here are overseeing, they will be overseen by three medical physicians, Dr. Howe, Dr. Beulter, and Dr. Withome, which were also doing a vaccination clinic, so I hope you guys will come to that, because you will meet the providers that are doing, that will be overseeing this clinic if we, if we get to do it.
And do you also do the Bridge? No?
No, no.
That's a different outfit.
Ah, different, okay.
I noticed in the diagram that there's a lab.
There is.
So I'm hoping that you're going to do like throat cultures there. UTIs, those won't have to be sent out, and where the student might have to wait a day or two to get results back. They're going to get them back right away.
Yep, the basics, flu, strep, I'm sure we could do a UTI.
The things you see all the time.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Katrina talks about the vaccines, I told you guys, they're, they're going to be at the festival. And I think you're going to have a really good idea of how they operate, because the people they have coming, they're going to have translators coming, I mean, they, they're impressive, they're all in. Like, they are here to help us, and it's, but our, I think our eyes are wide open on both sides.
Absolutely.
And Jimmy says, we're, we can scale it, like, we're, I think it's, I think it's going to be a game changer. I think it's going to be a game changer. But we're going to, we're going to scale it, we're going to keep our eyes open, we're going to make sure. Tonight's just, you know, it just, hopefully get your blessing to start the process of, so.
Well, I'm just thinking logistically, but I may be looking too far ahead. As far as like, you know, you have a student, an elementary student that's across town. The parent, you know, I can't get off work, can somebody else take? I mean, we're not getting in the business of like-
So they wouldn't need to. So we have things called a GALE unit. And this is where your school nurses at Willie Harris or wherever you want to be would telehealth to the provider that is at Blackhurst.
And they're able to do that with parents' consent, I'm guessing, correct?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
And they will be able to see the throat, the nose, everything.
So the nurse would be the guardian or protector?
Yeah.
That's a good question, it's all good questions.
I'm wondering about, who, who does the Bridge Health Center?
That's a premise healthcare. They're a nationwide provider for employers.
Are we reinventing the wheel, duplicating services?
No, we're not.
What do you base that on? Because we've got one health clinic, and couldn't we just open it to kids?
The premise healthcare is designed for employees. That's their focus. So they'll operate out of some, they're tremendously large nationwide healthcare system for, like, the nearest, not the nearest one, but the largest one I can think of that's closest in Indiana for Subaru. They have over 5,000 employees, and all 5,000 of those employees use their healthcare through premise healthcare. So, so Compass is locally based for the families that we would have here. Premise is nationwide.
And currently, our, you know, our, our staff go to the clinic as well, at the Bridge as well as the city. We've partnered with them, and so that's, it would be tough to have families and students go there as well.
Well, and I recently was speaking with a teacher in our district. It's not necessarily easy to get into the Bridge, because it's limited of what they can do and services they can provide for the size of employees from our district to get appointments. So I don't know that we can utilize it if it's already quite full and difficult to get into.
Also, this program with the telehealth option, so that the families, one of our problems with students was this issue of parents coming to get them, even if they could see a doctor, but having to leave work. But now they, almost an immediate connection with, with the doctor through our own school nurses. This just sounds like, just, for me, it sounds like a very, and I don't want, I'm one to probably jump in too quick and too much, but I love, I love at least looking into it.
I think it's worthwhile looking into, I mean, we're, we're not spending anything while looking at it. It's not coming out of our bond money, right?
Correct.
Got plenty of those things to talk about. I think the sustainment's important, right? So it doesn't sneak up on us that it's more than a one-time, or that we have a recurring cost that comes out. Now it's, we pay for it, and we have a partner here that helps, you know, support students. It's not going to be open to the public, right? It'll only be open to our students.
Correct, that's how it'll be advertised.
Yeah, so, I mean, I think that's a good first step, especially for, you know, security and making sure nobody uses that as an interest and all, entrance and all that fun stuff. So I think it's worth, well, you got to think about it. I think, I mean, I think it's worthwhile to at least look into, to see, for sure.
Is it, go ahead, go ahead.
When you said parents wouldn't give permission for this telehelping, would, would we have something at the beginning of the year where parents would sign permission for this? I mean, kids go to the nurse now without a permission slip.
Yeah, to see our nurse within the building. To go to do a telehealth option, yeah, permission would have to be, and we would have to work that out with Compass communicating with our nurses and training them on what that looks like.
That's something we'd work out, once we get past this initial permit.
Medical prescriptions and stuff like that as well. Yep. Is this something the school has seeked out, or is this something Compass has come to us? Because, I mean. When the CSIP was developed, was it four or five years ago now? It was listed as a goal of the district. So it's something that's been fresh in the mind of the district, but it's not something that has been practical from a, from a standpoint of finding a provider. So Compass reached out to us, I can't remember when you reached out to us exactly, and we're very enthusiastic of providing this as an option to the district. So that's what began the conversation, was there, was the dialogue.
Yeah, I think it's important, good question. CSIP goal, a Big Rock student needs. I mean, it's square, it's right where, where, I mean, I'm, I'm personally really excited about it. But I obviously understand the questions and making sure we're doing it the right way, too.
No offense for Compass being the ones here, but why Compass and why not somebody else?
Because right now they're showing us the greatest passion and enthusiasm for bringing it to us and putting the money, putting the money into it. So, I mean, not to be so blunt with, with my response, because that's not my intent.
It was a blunt question, so.
Yeah, but that's.
Yeah.
And again, what I've seen so far, and we say, hey, can you, we, we, we get to the meetings, we're talking, and you know, we're like, hey, by the way, can you do, can you do vaccines for us at the festival? I mean, it's, you need a translator, we're going to do, I mean, they're thinking about things that we don't even, I mean, it's, it is, it is, well, obviously the proof is in the pudding, so we'll see it. But in terms of what, the, the attention to detail, the things that we've seen, the proactiveness and the passion, like you said, it's there.
Can I add too, why Compass? Well, we're your federally qualified health center. There's not another one in St. Charles County. So I think we're a natural provider, we're also your community health center. We have a number of programs in your schools already and have for years. You've, you've always been wonderful partners, and I really see this as an expansion of what we've been doing together for years, not to mention the need for dental care. So while we won't provide dental care on-site, last year we opened a dental clinic on Muggie, and in three months, that was, we were so backed up, that we're opening a 16-bed, or 16-bed, 16-chair dental clinic on Woolfram. So we are really doing everything we can. We already have one at Compass Point, which would probably be the closest to you. But in addition to the, in addition to the school-based clinic at Mexico Court, which is really just across the highway, we are adding another pediatrician clinic there and a youth behavioral health urgent care, which will be great. So it really extends what we're doing, but it opens your families to a whole continuum of care that I don't know that they know they have access to.
Well, and some of you might know Compass formerly as Kreider.
Kreider Health Center, that's right. Thank you, Julie. You're like, oh.
Julie McClark just drops the mic. Katrina's like, where'd it go, Julie?
Just so you know, Katrina was the very first person I met with whenever I started this job 10 years ago.
Yeah, that's right.
To talk about services.
I don't want, I don't want to make it sound rude of a question, but what is, what's in it for Compass Health? Like, why is the, the big push for-
Serving.
To get in the ser-
Just serving. We want to increase the numbers of families and youth and children that we serve. We're here to serve. Our federally qualified health center, we served 109,000 last year, and our goal this year, the new fiscal year, I guess we're in it, aren't we, is to serve 140,000 individuals. So we have the capacity to serve, and you know, we thought your district would be a good partner to, this would be our first school-based clinic. We have no doubt that we can do it, but we know your district has different, different level of needs than some of the other districts in the county. And so we identified you as the go-to.
And have you guys had any other staffing issues? I mean, if this comes in and we have people here, I mean, every other place I hear about, even, I went to the dentist, and they said, we're so backed up, you're, we can't get you in in six months anymore. You're, you're nine, 10 months down the road.
There will not be a wait for day-to-day here. We're not worried about that.
I think part of the answer, Brian, is fees, too. Why, I mean, it's a business, so it's probably part of why they're interested in it.
Yeah.
I would guess.
Yeah.
I know. I appreciate the serving piece of it, but I think it's a little bit of a mutual relationship.
Well, let's be real, the revenue that we would bring in from this clinic is probably not going to be life-changing.
Probably not, that's fair. Fair point, too, yeah.
Yeah, we're here to serve.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for hanging in there for so long, Katrina. Appreciate all of your help. Are there any other discussion of this item? Do I have a motion to approve the bid solicitation?
I move, I move to approve the bid solicitation to begin for the student medical clinic at Blackhurst, as presented.
All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Thank you. And now, a financial report.
Makes me feel so awkward when you say, bring, bring us home. I don't know why, but I do. All right, Chris, if you don't mind going down to the bottom page, please. Right there we are. A couple things to look there first, I know that a lot of eyes, there we go, Chris. A lot of eyes go straight to that fund balance percentage, it's sitting at 22.63%. Couple things to note on that. One, June is our heavy payroll month. Typically spending 4.5 million on payroll and benefits per month. This is when we double our certified staff, so we pay double to our certified, our 10-month employees. And then, and that includes insurance benefits as well. So that's, that would look like 8.1 million for, for June. So we go from 4.5 to 8.1. So that certainly eats into your fund balance a little bit. The other factor is, is that we do pay out salaries with Esser funds, and then we have to request those funds back, so we know that that impacts your fund balance. We did have salary increases in all three groups this past year. That would, that would take, take that down a little bit. But then more importantly, one thing that we have to look at is our insurance fund. That's about a little over a percent taken from that this year based on original estimates. So had we, had we landed where we wanted to with our insurance fund, we'd probably be sitting at 23.6 as of the writing of this report, knowing that this can change as soon as the ASBR is approved and all our finances are looked at from, from the state level. So we're comfortable. I mean, you look at 22.6, you're probably, we're probably at 2.3 million, 2.4 million over that 20% margin of where board policy wants us to land. That's the ideal spot, 20, between 20 and 25. So I will always say that if we land at 22.5, that means we spent our money well.
Yeah.
You know, we've used our resources well, we've paid our staff well, our students have benefited. But then there's a conservative in me that also says, man, it sure would be nice to see 28 up there, because I feel better, right? And then we can give the staff some more, right? So anyhow, there's kind of two, two thoughts of thinking with that. So that's where we've landed as of June 30th, based on our June 30th reports as it sits. So that's where we're, we've landed as of June 30th, based on our, June 30th reports as it sits, knowing that we're just a few weeks away from that date, and we still have work to do to make, meet that August 15th deadline of first submission to the state for the ASBR. Other things for financial purposes that you'd want to know about, construction is so significant right now. So I won't even look it up. Coverdale and Lincoln HVAC projects are, are going along beautifully. No concerns, no issues there. Last year, if you guys remember, the RTUs, the rooftop units, were causing us significant delays and increasing our costs by the day. We're not seeing that issue right now. Our rooftop units are, are fine. They're being delivered. They're getting installed. And we're not, we're not stressing on that. Where we're stressing at right now, as of, well, let's just say yesterday, that was the stressor, is flooring, of all things. And we're, really, it's just flooring. That's where our biggest stress is coming from. We do have permission on a few of our projects that they would give, the city would give us temporary occupancy if the flooring did not get produced in time and installed in time, with the exception of the Blackhurst kitchen. But we think we resolved that yesterday with our architectural firm, Richard A, the flooring contractor, and our, and our construction crew, Aspire at Blackhurst. So we're getting some quarry tile shipped up to us from Dallas, and it should be here next week. And that means that we can have an operating kitchen in Blackhurst to start the school year. There was a concern that we were not going to, and I did not want to tell that to anyone, because we stopped serving out of that kitchen to meet the deadline and have the start of school with an operating kitchen. So that was, that was a pretty big stressor, but we believe that that's been resolved. We believe the flooring issues as of yesterday have been resolved, but we know how those things can go. So that's certainly on our radar, and that's on all of our, our, the architect's radar as well. So that's, that, those were our biggest concerns, Blackhurst and Knoll, right now.
And to Mr. Shields' credit, he would say it, he, we were at our admin meeting, and he, our admin retreat, he needed to go to the meeting, and he looked at me and said, I want you to know, there's a flooring issue, but I'm on it. And then to his credit and architect, two hours later, or whatever it is, he came back and he said, we got it solved. So, great job.
It was, it was, there was a little bit of luck involved. I hate to say it. I want to take credit.
We found, we found it in Texas.
Yeah, there, it's in Texas, and, you know, we're taken from a casino, so that makes me a little nervous. But they've promised that that casino's going to get their goods back, so we don't have to worry.
And that's contributors that, that were good.
So anyhow, those are, those are two of the big, bigger things. Now, a little bit more with some construction issues that we're currently looking at. Right now, we are, we have out-for-bid the Lincoln Kitchen. We believe that project is growing significantly as far as cost is concerned, that design was concerned. So we have a bid opening in the first week of August for that. It's very possible that piece may come off the table, or I will provide my opinion of why it should come off the table, because we're seeing a, a growing need at Harden Middle School and concerns that exist with that, particularly a north wing, that as of right now, we are not going to allow any staff member into due to some concerns, exterior concerns, where bird infestations, and I don't know what other animal infestation, has caused holes in the exterior of that building and produced some water in that section over a period of time. So we have that being remediated by a group right now. We've had a, several contractors on top of the roof looking at that, providing recommendations. And we are getting some masonry opinions on how we can, how we can fix that area to at least have it somewhat operational for this, for this school year. Worst-case scenario, because we know that we are going to demo that area anyhow, we leave it to where we don't use that space this next school year, knowing that it could be demoed at some point down the road. But because of that, I believe there will be an increase in cost at Harden, but that's a cost that we cannot overlook. And that's why Lincoln, we may have to, we may have to scale that back considerably. And my suggestion, if we were to have to do that, would be to keep that design and move that into the potential of a future bond issue if the board so believes that another bond in '25 is necessary.
And none of this is a surprise to our administration at either one of those two buildings, like you've been having.
Correct. Staff, staff was sent an email about it as well. So that should do it for me, I believe.
And I would, I would note this, it's, Jeremy's running, it's busy with construction, but it, it's, it's still, I, I feel like, at least on my plate, it's, it's, it pales in, in comparison to last year.
Last, last year, I didn't know, um.
Would you agree that or not?
Last year, we had major concerns about starting school on time. Major concerns, and I was very, very nervous. And I didn't want to come to the board and say, hey, we're not, I was 30 days into the job, I, hey, we're not going to start school on time, so.
Basically Monroe and, and success were basically miracles at the last second.
I, I believe it was a miracle, yeah.
From a lot of hard work.
Uh, but Monroe, we have Monroe Phase Two going on right now, and at this point in time, you know, no concerns presented, no material concerns at all, no supply concerns, no labor concerns. So we've been very fortunate with that job up to this point in time. We hope, we hope that that continues. And the outlook right now is that's going to continue.
Any questions on the financial report?
I have lots of questions on all of those things, but I'm going to wait until we're actually talking about those things, because it's too early. I move to approve the district financial report as presented.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? District financial report is approved. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Do I have a second?
Aye, second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.